I would like to call this July 10th Council Work Session of Lur. We have several people here this evening for some presentations, so let's start with Susan Taylor. Do you want to go to the podium, Susan? Susan's from the Friends of the Delaware Canal.
Hi. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to begin by thanking you all for how very, very helpful everyone was with the Delaware Canal Festival. The police, the emergency, the residents, our committee. It takes a community to do a really good event, and Bristol Borough has that going, so I thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to ask for your blessing and help with re-establishing a very good project that the borough put in place 20 years ago, which is the signage along the Delaware Canal Trail from Jefferson Avenue down to Riverfront Park. The signage denotes various historic places, locks, et cetera, along the way. I give a couple walks a year in Bristol Borough, and everyone loves those signs. They want to know the information. And unfortunately, in 20 years, they're fiberglass embedment signs, and they deteriorate. So I don't know whether you got the pictures of the signs. Thank you.
Your packet was in council.
Thank you. As you can tell from the pictures, especially the one on the lower right, the fiberglass is really deteriorated and to the point of being unreadable. There's water damage on some, a little bit of graffiti on some. And interestingly enough, over 20 years, situations do change. The sign at Washington Street tells people to look at the powerhouse. Not there. And there are better ways to tell some of the stories now. More pictures have been found of the industrial district, what's now canal works, et cetera. And a new concept of explaining why that area is industrialized is here, which tells the story better. And so those are all things that would be good to incorporate, and it would be excellent to be able to have signs that people can actually read. The graphics available here are great, the stories are wonderful. So we'd like to work on a project to be able to share those again. We have talked with the Grundy Library, with Carolyn Harold Mitchner, with the Friends. I think we have a volunteer team that can rather quickly go through the existing text, decide what's good, what isn't good, put it together. I've given you prices involved with doing the graphic design, done by a woman who has done our loop trail graphics, and also the prices to fabricate the large 36 by 48 panels as well as the smaller 18 by 24. And best-case scenario, and I don't think it would be a whole lot more, would be approximately $4,500 to redo eight waysides and three kiosks. So I would... Jeanne Williams at the Grundy Foundation wanted me to present this to Borough Council first, to see how it fit in with your overall master plan for the borough. And we certainly hope it does, and get that canal trail back.
Susan, are you going out to raise funds for this? Are you asking council to pay? I don't know where... Is there a grant for this?
There is money. Existing grant for this.
There's what?
There isn't an existing grant for this.
So this would have to be something then be part of our budget for next year?
We will...
If there's a way to put it in.
We will request grant money, which may well be easily forthcoming. And I know there's $200 available, my fellow committee members and I agree, in grant proceeds from the Canal Festival.
All right.
So there's seed money there.
What did you say the total was again? I'm sorry, I was writing it down.
About $4,500.
I think it's something that we could discuss, you know, over the next month or so, and see, you know, what money, as we start working on our budget, to see where we are and how we want to move forward with this.
Okay. In general, is there consensus that we should be going out and trying to get the grant funds for this, with Borough Council? Is this contrary to any direction the council wants to go?
There's grant money available, and we're never going to turn money down.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I think any one of us would certainly would like to see these signs improved, it's just a matter of figuring out where our budget is.
Yeah, and it may well be that the borough doesn't have any part in funding it, which would be great.
I'm almost sure we replaced a few of these about a year ago. Remember, we had repaired and replaced this here one, the one in the top left hand. I don't know if we replaced the one on the bottom left. I'm not sure.
Well, these pictures were just taken a month ago. The Friends of the Delaware Canal replaced three of the generic panels, mules and Bowman's at the lagoon, because we had duplicates of the generics, and we had volunteers come out and do those.
All right, well, we'll look into them, we'll be in touch.
Great.
Thank you, Susan.
One question, not concerning the signs, Susan. The canal from Green Lane to the Jefferson Avenue Bridge, it's filled, gets emptied, it turns into a big fish kill. Me and my wife years ago have been in there saving the fish, I see kids saving the fish all the time. What's the chance of that staying full this time?
Okay. The canal from the New Hope Inlet, which is there by Odette's, south to Bristol, is fed by the Delaware River. And from 1831 until 1936, there were two water wheels in the river there, that conveyed river water over into the canal. They went out in the flood of '36, and since then, we're all susceptible to the level of the river. If you want to know whether there's water coming south, go on the NOAA website that has the river gauges. And at Trenton, if it's less than nine, there's no Delaware River water coming into the canal.
Yeah, it's just a shame for wildlife, though, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's a fish kill. Did the Delaware Canal ever think of a one-way gate at Green Lane? Let the water in, but won't let the water out, so that we can supply from Jefferson Avenue to Green Lane with our well? You guys ever look into that possibility, a one-way gate there at Green Lane?
Probably, you have block four.
No, not block four, right there at the roadway.
Right there at the road.
At a locking point where we'll take the water, but won't give you any water.
Yeah. So that's something to consider.
Okay.
I also want to add that Friends have been working on various schemes to bring back some kind of mechanism to take the river water and put it in the canal. We've recommended an Archimedes screw pump to the state, old, very ancient technology, but it works, we have engineers saying it works. DCNR has dragged their feet on that. Last year, we also proposed putting an inefficient centrifugal pump in at Bowman's Hill, again, to water the southern end. And DCNR has to go before the Delaware River Basin Commission to get permission to do that, and that was put back. So we're all frustrated by the situation, truly.
Thanks, Susan.
Thanks.
Susan, do you have new signs, the proposed signs? Do you have renderings on those?
No.
When you hit them, can you maybe email them to us?
Oh, sure. Essentially, they'll continue to follow the essence of the system that's out there, okay? I think they'll be less busy, a little cleaner looking, and certainly will show them to you. But again, that's an issue of getting the grant money in place, so they can at least pay the designer. She doesn't charge much, but she charges a little, as she should. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a special presentation tonight. Joe, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Chief?
Chief.
Thank you.
This was a big setup.
That gets bigger. We have a special presentation tonight for a very special person, who has a very special family today.
That's awesome!
God, nice hair.
We've asked everybody to come out tonight to help us celebrate Sergeant Joe Moore's 25 years with Bristol Borough Police Department. I'm fortunate, probably one of the only... Well, Judge Parento will remember too. I remember when we hired him, he was a, you know, a patrolman, worked his way into senior patrolman to sergeant, has done one hell of a job in becoming a leader within our police department. And I want to congratulate him on his 25 years and also on continued success.
I would love to thank Fred if this was my idea, but by no means was it. I had no idea Joe was even here for 25 years. His wonderful daughters had brought it to our attention, and his squadmates said, "You know what? Joe has been a phenomenal father and a phenomenal leader in the Bristol Borough Police Department." We got him a plaque that says Sergeant Joseph Moore, with deepest appreciation for your 25 years of service to the people of Bristol Borough and the Bristol Borough Police Department. Judge Parento hired Joe. What year?
'92.
'92. You know, great choice. I asked Chief Porter to join us tonight. So when you talk about community policing, and if you're involved in law enforcement, and, you know, Joe being in 25 years just really makes me feel really, really, really old, you know, thinking about how many years I've been doing this. That's true. But the thing is that it's the community aspect of what Joe can do. He gets out of the car, there's not a person on, in the community that doesn't know Joe. The interaction when he shows up on the scene is the diffusing of the situation, his ability to mitigate circumstances, ability to foresee circumstances, to keep the public safe, to keep the officers safe, is very uncanny. He's really a true definition of a street cop, and a street sergeant, and a real good street leader. And Joe, I can't be more happy to have you as number two in this department.
Thank you.
Everybody look this way, my camera first. Say, Joe's best.
Now get Timmy Chuck up there, one on each side.
You guys don't want to be alone, do you?
Surprise!
Council President, Judge Parento.
It is indeed an honor to be here, standing next to Joe. Congratulations, Joe. As Joe said, Mayor Saxon said, "Joe was my first hire." And the funny story about it was that Joe was the player to be named later in a trade that we made with Tullytown. We sent Bill... We sent Bill Gunderman down to Tullytown, and in return, were you on the trash heap when we got you, or what? He was building a mountain down there, it's going to be Tullytown Ski Resort down there. But we brought Joe on board, and from the very beginning, Joe was very anxious to learn and to do things right. And as the chief said, yeah, there's a lot of people in Bristol that know Joe, I mean, there's not many that don't. Some of them aren't too happy with Joe, but, you know, that's a part of police work. You're going to have people that admire you and people that don't like you, and both for the same reasons, because you do your job. And sometimes when we do our jobs as law enforcement, I do the same thing, there aren't... Both sides aren't always happy. But Joe has a way of making it work out so that, for the majority of the time, both sides are happy. He's got very level-headed, he's done a great job. I'd like to take credit for teaching him a kind of a laid-back approach to things, and he picked up on it right away. So, Joe, congratulations.
Thanks, Judge.
I don't want to tell you, "Have another 25 years," but best of luck, buddy.
Usually, I'm real good at this speaking upfront, but you guys really got me good tonight. I had no clue. These guys rushed me in here, you rushed me in here. So I really, I'm just going to shoot from the hip and just say, 25 years ago, like the judge said, I got hired here. For some reason, I don't know what it was, I just knew something, I loved something about Bristol Borough. A lot of guys were leaving and going to bigger departments, Ben Sano, Bristol Township, and so on and so forth. There was just something about the borough that I liked, and I think it was back then, being young and everybody knowing everybody here in this little tight community. And it didn't take long, when you're out there on the street, to get to know everybody. You knew the good guys, you knew the bad guys, and I just, I don't think this is a job, this is a career. I loved doing this, still after 25 years, and hopefully I have plenty more time left in me to do this, to stay healthy and all, because as far as I'm concerned, I'm blessed to have been here. And I'm blessed to have a great family, I have great colleagues, we have a great chief, the council. I'm just blessed, I don't know what else to say, but thank you for everybody and being here tonight, thank you for the plaque and the honor and acknowledging 25 years, and let's go for another at least six. Hey, college is expensive, maybe. I've got another six years I've got to go. But I want to say one more thing. I want to thank Judge Parento, Chief Porter, my two chiefs since I started here, Chief Henry, and I just want to say that Bristol Borough is an awesome, awesome town, whether you're a police officer or you just live here. And we have a lot of great cops here, a lot of young guys coming up and stuff like that, and we're going in the right direction, hopefully we can keep going in the right direction. And I just wanted to say, Friday night, the chief was on vacation, I came down for Friday, first Friday, and honestly, Mayor, you were here, I think, I never seen a great crowd like I seen Friday night, and that's a testament to everybody here, not just me, everybody sitting here, Ralph, Mr. Dillon, everybody here, everybody in Bristol, all the police officers. I was really proud to be down there Friday night, honestly, and see that type of crowd. With the boats, the docks were full of boats, and it was just awesome, so thank you.
Okay, we have... We have a presentation by Helen, are you presenting, or Mary, or both, or?
Self enchant.
Ben Haltigazala.
Well, first of all, I'm here, I'm president of Bristol Cultural and Historical Foundation, and I want to thank you all for providing those wonderful docks to the community, and we're going to take advantage of them for our 50th anniversary. We're employing the Tall Ship Gazella, and tonight I think we're going to work on an agreement with Carol, because you own the docks, and so that's a very important part. So we're very happy to be able to participate by bringing the Tall Ship Gazella in for our anniversary and for the Bristol Day on October 20th. The night before, we're planning a dinner, a gala dinner, for a limited number of people, catered by the King George, so that should be another nice affair. And we're hoping to bring people in from out of town as well, and I'm sure they will come in to see the Gazella. I'm going to turn it over to Mary, who has more information.
Okay.
Who's our chairperson.
Thank you. So Mary Jess Waldy, Chair, Bristol Day this year. As soon as the council got the final approval for the docks, our entertainment chair, Helen Younglove, over here, contacted the people with the Tall Ship Gazella. And thanks to your collaboration with the contract, on Historic Bristol Day, Saturday, October 21st, from 10 until 4, we will be able to provide free tours of the ship for all our visitors. There will be an article in the upcoming advance written by Kate Merway. If you'd like to know a little bit more about the history of the ship, she has it all in the upcoming article. So thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing maybe 15,000 people this year for the Historic Bristol Day.
Do they have any questions for Mary or anybody about the Gazella coming in?
No, we're excited.
Seems awesome.
Very cool.
Well, we should vote on it tonight, and I could sign the contract. If you guys want to wait around, we can get it to you tomorrow.
We absolutely will wait.
Okay.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you very much.
Let's do the mandatory.
Samantha.
Samantha. Last time you went so quick. Samantha's here, this is a, something that has to be done yearly, I guess, Samantha?
Yes.
Or are you here to update our... Why don't you explain the permit?
Okay, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. This is in regards to your MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan. It's, the Pennsylvania Department of environmental protection requires submission of a notice of intent, along with any applicable pollution reduction plan by September 16th, 2017. Under the 2018 PAG 13 General Permit, Bristol Borough is required to develop and implement a pollution reduction plan for Silver Lake and Mill Creek. Bristol Borough submitted a written justification for a waiver request, which was denied by the PA DEP on March 15th, 2017. So therefore, we submit, we prepared a pollution reduction plan, and part of the pollution reduction plan is a public presentation, this fulfills that requirement. A copy of the presentation is available at Borough Hall during the normal hours. The borough is required to make a complete copy of the PRP available for review, publish a public notification in a newspaper, accept comments for a minimum of 30 days, and accept comments from any interested party of the public at a public meeting. Just so you know, if compliance isn't kept with the MS4 program, then administrative fines of $37,500 per day per violation could be enforced. So that's why we continue to do these presentations and adhere to the MS4 program. Quick, couple notes about your pollution plan for Silver Lake and Mill Creek. The planning area for those areas that drain to Mill Creek and Silver Lake is 165 acres. The existing sediment load was calculated to be 101,940 pounds per year. You are required to reduce 10% of that, so we are proposing to implement a vegetated open channel or water quality filter, hydrodynamic device near Hal Street at one of the end of the outfalls. And that proposed sediment load reduction for BMTs would be 21,498 pounds per year, which exceeds the limit from what DEP requires. So you'll be in compliance, we have five years to implement this project. We will be going after grants to hope cover the cost of the construction of these facilities. And if anyone has any comments or questions, I'll take them at this time.
Is there already a proposed cost?
Proposed cost for the hydrodynamic filters. For a four-foot diameter filter, the cost of just the product could be $9,000, if you get larger in size, it could be $65,000. That's not including the excavation or installation of that product or the design. That's why we'll be going for grants.
And this would be something that, Mr. Dillon, we would have to budget for over the course of five years, which is...
No, this is the storm sewer, the rainwater has nothing to do with sanitary sewers. It's not in the budget yet. Council has further appealed this to EPA under the concept of cost benefit, the cost is astronomical versus the benefit, that maybe there's other ways to address it, but if council is not successful in that appeal, this is what the road that we're faced with right now, so. And again, you're facing potential fines of $37,500 a day.
A day.
A day.
Per violation.
They are really planning a hardball DEP, so.
Have they explained to us how this filtering water here is going to keep sediment, quarter of a mile upstream?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Have they explained how this filtration... Have they explained how this filtration is going to benefit the sedimentation at Silver Lake, which is upstream about, at least a quarter of a mile?
Right. We only have to reduce it by 10%. So the drainage area for, that goes to Hal Street takes into consideration that 10% that goes to Silver Lake. So, that area is included in Hal Street's drainage area, and we'll have met the 10% requirements. We don't have to do 100% reduction of the sediment that's entering into Silver Lake. So therefore, we're meeting the requirements. Does that answer your question?
Once we do the 10%.
Sounds very government-like.
Yeah. Sorry.
The sediment we're on upstream, but that's...
Right. And unfortunately, we're at the very end of the stream, and we're getting the sediment from everybody else, but they're supposed, they have to implement pollution reduction plans themselves. And they're supposed to be reducing 10% along the whole creek, so...
All right, and that'll satisfy them once we do the 10%.
For this five-year permit term.
Okay.
This is only effective till 2023, and after that, then they'll issue a new permit, which we'll have to submit another, which may have to submit another notice of intent for saying that we'll comply with those regulations.
Okay.
First township and Middletown also have to reduce the sedimentation deposits in Blackfish Creek and Otter Creek up above, or Mill Creek?
Mill Creek, yes. Mill Creek, um, I know Pendelboro, Bristol Township, Middletown Township, anyone who's along Mill Creek, it's impaired the whole way. So, um, DEP does a report, it's called the 303D list, and it lists all the impaired waters in Pennsylvania. And Mill Creek is on there, and all the municipalities that touch it will have to do these requirements.
Thank you.
Also, too, in your packet, there's a letter dated May 11th, 2017, which I assume it's to the EPA?
Yes.
That's kind of our appeal?
Yes.
And we haven't heard anything back on that?
No, we have not heard anything back from the EPA yet on that letter that we submitted.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Wait, Merle, I have something.
So this, so this project, this go-to project taking Adam Powell Creek?
Uh, Adam Powell Creek drains directly into the Delaware River, which is not impaired for sediment, so this is not taken into consideration, that drainage area. So it's not a requirement from the PDE.
Okay, and what about the water that we're going to be taking now all of the turn point with the new project?
Um...
It's going to develop now?
That's unrelated to this MS-4 work.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Got through that? Herbie, do you have anything?
A couple things. Uh, one, there was a request to relocate a hydrant at Wood and Mulberry Streets. I went out with Aqua. We've identified the site, and as they get up, um, to that intersection on the Wood Street project, they're going to relocate that fire hydrant. We're also in the process of setting up a swift water rescue awareness class to deal with water rescues, uh, and that, that'll be scheduled shortly. Our smoke alarm grant ends on July the 22nd, which just means that that's the administrative end of the program. We still have detectors, they still are available. And just, uh, last month, the fire department responded to, um, 80 calls, which is about double what we've been doing. And the medical calls alone had doubled last month, um, so we were really busy. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Herbie? Chief?
Uh, thank you, the Baron Council first allowing us to present that to Joe tonight. That was greatly appreciated. Um, we've been pretty much keeping an eye on Mill Street and the docks, as we knew there was going to be increased population due to the popularity of these projects. We're dealing with the situations as they occur. We're probably having to have some more meetings. Unfortunately, you can't police the human factor. You can't police people from being, not watching their kids, or being adventurous and stuff like that. But we're doing the best we can with the resources we have, so, um, if anybody has any questions on that, I've been getting a lot of, uh...
Uh, this is, I mean, I just think maybe it's, I was gonna, I was gonna bring it up, and maybe it's a good time to talk about it. Just moving forward with what the chief is mentioning, you know, obviously, this adds, the docks, that is fantastic project, I think we all agree with that, adds a layer of, a level of security and, and issues. And I know we're going to adopt an ordinance tonight that makes it clear what people can and cannot do on those docks, but it's already kind of posted that way, and it seems like there are a lot of people that are not reading those signs. I'm just wondering if there is a way that we could talk about some sort of volunteer, I don't know, force is the right word? Just because there's so many people that are already just sitting down there literally every day, just watching the docks and watching what happened. A lot of good, responsible, uh, citizens. I'm wondering if there's a way we could have, and I don't know how the chief feels about this, or how the rest of the council feels about it, but some sort of volunteer force, just people that are willing to sit, sit there. I wouldn't recommend that we tell them to confront anyone, but just a friendly face that says, "Here are the rules." And if anyone's really, you know, doing some stuff, then obviously they call the police. Uh, I just don't know if our, if, if we think that is something that is worthwhile. I just do know that these are one of the best things I've ever seen happen in this town. And, I mean, until you get out there, they are just so unbelievably impressive. Um, at the same time, I think it's important, especially in the beginning, that people realize what we will and will not tolerate, and I know that there's only so much the police can do, so...
Well, I was, I mean, I was thinking about the same thing. I mean, even with, even with the, the new signage, or what we're proposing here with the ordinance changes, is there a reason we only have it up to 14 years old, accompanied by an adult on the docks themselves? Why couldn't it be 18? Is there a reason why, anyone there? Why we have 14?
Motor's license.
Motor's license? So somebody that's 14 has the ability to drive a boat, and then they can wander around? They just come out and hang out if you want them?
Still motor's on the dock though.
Okay. But that, that was the reason why 14? And, um, and the other thing about, the idea of signage is that when you're talking about signage, it's, signage isn't going to stop anybody from doing it, especially kids at, you know, certain ages, they're going to go out, they're going to be playing on it. I don't think this is a police issue, I can't, you know, I don't think that we're going to be able to send the police there to, to monitor it, you know? But there needs to, we need to have something down there. And these times, I mean, listen, we're going to be purchasing a, a new house on Chestnut Street. We recently purchased a house on Chestnut, so we're spending money. To me, I think that we need to spend money on something that is going to protect the kids that are down there on those docks, because they're going to be down there, regardless of what signs we put up there, there will be kids down there. And to me, the saddest thing in the world is, is to have somebody drowned there. You know, those docks are, I mean, they're beautiful and magnificent, they're awesome. But to put a dam on it real quick would be a kid going down there and losing his life. So, whether that be, I don't know if we could look into some type of surveillance that we have, maybe at the baseball fields around town? Some type of monitoring where, you know, it's, it, it's going to, you know, protect the, the youth of, of the town, or anybody really, but specifically the youth.
Just, have you done?
Yeah.
Just to let you know, we have surveillance cameras. We have emergency phones. We have light rings. We have fire extinguishers. So I think we, we had several meetings with a group of people that I formed a committee with, not only, you know, borough residents and, you know, our engineers, and the police chief was there, and the mayor was there. So, you know, we don't want to come out with too many rules and regulations in the beginning. Our main concern is safety. Uh, I think we're doing everything we can. The only other option is to hire somebody, if that's a recommendation you would like to make.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm saying...
Hire some part-time help down there to stand there? I have no problem with that.
I, I would be okay with that, absolutely.
What about a volunteer force? I mean, what about...
I think that when you, it's, when you're asking somebody to volunteer their time, it's, it's not going to work. We could try it, but I don't have a problem adding on the agenda tonight to hire somebody part-time, maybe like two or three different shifts for maybe till the end of the summer, just to see how it goes.
Yeah, I would, I'm, I'm down with that.
All right, so let's make that an agenda item.
Ralph, I think once we adopt these ordinances and, and the rules and regulations, we should send a copy to all the marinas. There's not, not that many from Trenton, maybe down to Philadelphia, so that they have a copy right there in their clubhouse. Because as they talk about, you know, it could be part of an announcement that the, the docks are here for, for their, for their use. We all, we could also include the, the rules and regulations, so people know what's involved here.
All right. Anybody else have any questions on the docks?
There's a gentleman in the back.
Sir?
My son and I were in the Shoney...
Please, state your name for the record.
My name's Phil Carroll. I'm a resident of Bucks County. Uh, my son and I, we have a boat in, uh, the Shoney State Marina, and we came up Saturday evening to the, to the docks, and they're absolutely beautiful. A couple of things. Uh, do you know if they're going to be putting in no wake zone?
It's signage?
Yes.
We have signs out there.
We didn't see them.
All right. Merle?
I believe that somebody is, uh, taken.
Somebody already took it down?
We have, we have two no wake zones, uh, and one was taken, and we're in the middle of replacing it.
No sign, no steel, no wake signs. Any other point? Uh, might be with your access to the, uh, the docks. If you had maybe a card access, people get off their boat, it's a machine here to grab a card, it gets them in and out.
We're working on it.
That's it.
Yeah, we're, we have so many irons in the fire right now. Believe me.
But it's beautiful.
Thank you for your input, though. We appreciate it.
Just so everybody knows, the sign that's back there, Mike Myers, uh, everybody knows, for those of you who know, his daughter made that sign and wanted to be here tonight, but she couldn't. Another engagement came up, but he wanted to come here, and he taped it on the wall to let us know that, that how happy everybody is about the docks. So that's where that sign came from.
Paint doesn't come off the wall.
All right. Anybody have anything else for the chief? Lorraine?
Um, I just, I think it's really awesome that the Gazella is coming for Bristol Day. And like, again, I'd like to thank you, Helen Younglove, and thank you, Mary, and thank you, what did you say your name is?
Jan.
Jan. Thank you very much for heading it up, because it, it's a big project, I know. And also, uh, last Thursday, when we opened the docks, I think it was the proudest moment for most of us here. Um, and I want to say a special thanks to Ralph for his relentless work on the docks. Um, it's just amazing that it, it came to fruition, and I'm thrilled. Also, I just wanted to say a special thanks, and I know I always do this, but I would like to thank Donna McCluskey, Shirley Brady, and Henry Freitag. Our gardens on Jefferson Avenue are flourishing. They're, it's completely filled. People are enjoying each other's company. There's so many children there to watch and help, and they were cutting today off, you know, the bad leaves and all that. And parents are showing their children how to, you know, plant and keep things going, and having them water, and it's just a really nice thing. There's grandparents there, and, um, I really want to thank them. This is a great project, and I love being a part of it. That's all I have.
Greg?
Um, I was in, uh, Northern Liberty's Fishtown this past weekend. It's something I had brought up in the past, and I know Mr. Salerno had some concerns about it, um, about presenting such a drastic change to drivers. But they had, in lieu of speed bumps, and we talked a few years ago about speed bumps, and, um, and there were some legitimate concerns about what would happen if just a speed bump appeared, and, um, you know, what could happen to someone's car as a result of it. But they had these things, and they had signs next to them that they were called, they called them speed cushions. I don't, it was the first time I'd ever seen it. They're very gentle, they're very light on a car, they, you know, you noticed them, you slowed down, but they, they did very little to cause any, um, I, I, you know, harm to my car or anyone else's, I think, that maybe didn't even notice them till the last minute. Chief, are you familiar with speed cushions?
I've seen them deployed.
And what, what do you think about them insofar as speed and, uh...
They have their value. Again, it's, even though they're cushions, they have that body carriage going up and down, so we receive complaints of sometimes the residents are put in front of, it's depending where you're putting it.
Right.
Are we talking about Mill Street?
Well, I, I mean, honestly, the, I think the reason that they're in Northern Liberty's Fishtown is because that's an area where now a lot of young families live and have a lot of little kids. So I wasn't thinking particularly about Mill Street, I'm just thinking about certain spots in town where we have all, I think, expressed concerns at some point in time about the level of speed. So, I, I just think, I'm just wondering, I know that our, our police officers and every police officer in Pennsylvania's hands are tied when it comes to enforcement of speed, if they're, if this is a thought that's not a speed bump, but also...
One of the things we did, uh, in my past employers, when we deployed those type of devices, and we did, you had a sign off every resident on that street.
Got it.
There was no, nobody that's going to be able to complain about it, not...
Got you.
So, there was value to it.
All right. Uh, just, just something I noticed, I thought it was a neat idea, and maybe it's something we can think about for the future. Um, and that's all I have.
Yeah. Um, first thing is, uh, Mrs. Cohen, do you know where are we in the process of...
County, direct your questions to me, please.
Yeah, well, it was, it was something that me and Lorraine were working on together.
I don't, I don't know where we are. I know what you're going to...
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Okay.
But we do have to check into that.
Guys, want to direct your que...
Yeah, it's, we will now, yeah. It's just to, to rekindle the talks about refurbishing or doing some work over at the basketball courts. I know we talked about it before...
And the way it was left...
Uh-huh.
You had said, "Let's see if we could get grant money."
Mm-hmm.
That's where it's at. We're trying to get grant money. That was your statement.
Yeah, I'm not...
You think you can get grant money, let's try to do it that way. So, that's where we're at. We're working on grant money.
Okay, so, and when you say we're working on grant money, is that something I need to be doing, or is that something that...
If you can get somebody to come up with 100,000, 150,000, be my guest.
Well, it's not the idea of being somebody's guest, is this the idea of...
Oh, I mean, we, we welcome that.
Yeah. All right. So that's something that I guess Lorraine and I need to do?
Yeah, if you can.
And then the third thing, Mr. Dillon, I know that we talked, uh, it's been about, I guess, a week and a half, two weeks for that information that I asked you for, Gilmore and Sewer. Can you tell me how long do you think it'll be?
No, not really. I think maybe if I bring in Angie in, in, on Sunday, and, uh, maybe we can get it together. But we've had a lot going on.
I know, you told me that. I was just wondering if there was a timeframe, that way I could...
Well, it's, it's sewer, and, you know, again, uh, this council has nothing to do with the sewer.
All right, so...
I'll try to get you the public information as soon as I can, but again, like I stated, I think you had four requests, and I think I answered two of them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, we're working on it. It's on the list.
Thank you.
And then the last thing, I guess I want to add to the agenda of what I postponed for, uh, last month's, uh, agenda meeting, was to add to the agenda for Mr. DeJezepi to pay for, personally pay for, the cost of the amount when he sued me for defamation about two years ago, is for him to personally take care of the bill, which is about 10,000, which cost the taxpayers from the, uh, insurance company that handled the case. So I'd like to add that to the agenda for tonight.
Do you have the exact figure?
Um, not, no. It was, you could just say it was like 98 hundred dollars, but you could make it, you know, I'm sure he has no problem paying 10,000 if he's willing to pay it, so... So make it 10,000, and then whatever extra we'll put into, if he put into recreation.
Anything else? Dave?
Yeah, I was talking to a lady friend of mine, she's selling a house on, uh, Rojo on Beaver Street. A guy was interested, uh, came in from Doylestown, just, just want to make the sale of it, they got close, but the guy was interested in moving in the borough, because he thought it was the upcoming maniok. So, uh, that's, that's good news, when you hear that on the street. That's all I got.
Louis?
I just want to say, we, we, Lorraine said about Thursday night, and, and then Fri, Thursday went to the dock opening, and then this past week with the first Friday, it's just unbelievable. A lot of good things happening in town. Thursday, those docks are so impressive.
I think we finally realized that that river is the greatest asset we had for a long time, it got overlooked, and this is what makes us a different community. We've had a lot of other good things. The people make it the special community, but that thing, that just brings more awareness to our town. That's all I have.
Tony?
I just have a question regarding the sidewalks along Mill Street. It's mainly the three hundred, four hundred blocks. Looks like the, along the curb there where the brick is, looks like it's sinking in some areas, and it's actually, it's more than like a few inches, so it could be like a trip hazard. I know in front of the pharmacy is pretty bad over there, so I don't know, do we maintain that, or is it the, you know, the owner's responsibility to maintain that?
Like any other sidewalk in town, the owner's responsible for the sidewalk.
Okay. Also, I...
If you're aware of something, I'd like to know about it, so I sent John down there and get it fixed, because, you know, somebody falls, and we can say we...
Joe and I have gone out there, he'd taken some pictures. I'll go out and do it, I'll take some pictures, and, you know, thank you. I had the opportunity to ride with Joe Carroll last Friday, just to observe some issues that were ongoing issues in the ward and in other parts of town, just to get a feel for, you know, the town and kind of what Joe does. I did notice, you know, I was out with Joe for about maybe three hours, many of the residents are placing trash in the white plastic bags, they're not putting them in containers, you know, and I've noticed numerous, where, numerous instances where it's been ripped open by birds and squirrels, and, you know, then we actually follow the trashman. The trashman comes, he picks them up, and it goes all over the place. So it's kind of easy to blame the trashman for a lot, you know, a lot of the trash, and it's not really their fault, and you expect them to pick it up on a continuous basis. So I, you know, I'd like to see this enforced, you know, I think there's something in the ordinance that says that you have to put trash in a container. I'd just like to see us enforce that. Also, going with Joe, I know that he, it's my opinion anyway, with that day, that he's, you know, the apartment seemed to be overwhelmed. I was out with him for like three hours, he had to come back, and then he has a couple hours of paperwork as well, so half of his time is spent coming back and doing his paperwork. So I don't know if there's anything that could, if he's using any of the electronic device that John Miller is using, if he's using any, if that would help him out, alleviate, you know, free up some of his time, or give him, speed up the process, or streamline something, I don't know if that's a, if he is, or if that's an option. But I know he's taking pictures, and he needs to come back, and I'm assuming he has to upload, download pictures, print them out, and then research all the codes, and issue citations and all that. But I would like to add to the agenda to hire a part-time, another code enforcer guy to help him out. And then maybe meet with John Miller to see, you know, develop a plan of action again, and, you know, enforce the trash and other things. I was out with him, and he had a lot of stops, you know, just to, just to grass complaints, the trash complaints, and anything else that he sees, so. So I'd like to give him, give him some help and put on the agenda for that. That's it. Thank you.
I'd like to agree with Tony. I did speak to Joe Carroll on Friday, who told me that him and Tony went around, and specifically said they need help, they're really backed up, and I know we talked about hiring some part-timers, and I don't know where we're at with that, but we really do need to get a grip on the problem, especially in the summertime, it's different. And you're right, like the trash, if it's not put out properly, then the trash people are going to drop it when they're trying to pick it up, and we blame them, and it's really not all their fault. So I really do agree with Tony on that. As a West Ward Council person for the last fourteen years, I'd just like to say that it's amazing what's going on in our ward. I mean, all the new development, all the new stores, you see it, you just go down there from Greg's new place, everything that's coming about, it's just growing and growing. And then when we went to cut the ribbon, and we thanked Mr. Dillon for cutting the ribbon for us, for the docks, it just, there's so much going on in this town, that I just really think we should be grateful and keep it, you know, keep it going. First Fridays, packed, packed, like, it's just, this town has grown so much, and there's a lot of people to thank for that, and I just couldn't sit here and thank them all. But thank you, Ralph, for helping us with those docks and pursuing a dream that I didn't think was going to happen, but it did. Also, I talked about a couple months ago hiring Kevin back. I know some people are against it, and some people are for it, but if there's anybody who can get out there and help, it would be Kevin. But that's just me throwing that out there, because he brought it up. So we do, but we do need someone to help John and Mr. Carroll, it's just way too much for them. Also, I believe I saw, I don't know if I saw it by email or in my packet, I didn't see it in this packet, I couldn't find it, but we're going to do a survey on Mill Street, on the traffic on Mill Street by the King George, and we talked about adding Market Street to that by the theater, because there is a lot of traffic now, especially by the theater, when the buses are bringing people from out of town. And it just worries me, it concerns me, even though I've seen Mrs. Burton standing out there, God bless her, trying to, you know, keep the traffic going. But I'm hoping, Mr. Dillon, that that's going to be part of the survey done.
Sorry. We're trying to keep moving.
Okay, and then last but not least, you did hear me about my survey, right, Mr. D?
Did I do the meeting, or was I going to do something?
All right. All right, you all heard me. And then, um, let me see. Okay. Oh, the Otter Street Playground. Now, I went there myself and took some pictures, I'll send them to you, Mr. Dillon. The grass is coming through the rubber things, like it's coming through, and it looks horrible, like we need to order more of the rubber stuff that we throw in there. I don't know how often we do furnish the playgrounds, but that playground's in bad shape. And I know that the crew's been really busy, and we've been trying to get them some help too, but we need to do something. And there's a swing that's broken, and I'd like to see that fixed immediately for the kids to be able to enjoy. On that note, on behalf of this council, I would like to give my condolences to Herbie, who lost his mother a couple weeks ago, and to the Barical family and the Battistini family, who also lost some young people last week. These are families that are big in the community, and I just feel like, you know, they deserve our condolences, if not more. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few things. One, we talked about this a few weeks ago, about a motion to have the borough manager to purchase material, materials, and a contract for labor to renovate the dock project down there. Everybody was in agreement with that, we discussed it, and...
You mean the wharf?
The wharf itself. So we're giving the manager authorization to hire, nobody has applied yet to put their name in, but to hire somebody, it's for the labor and to purchase materials for the maintenance of the wharf. Also, to go out to bid, advertise for the electrical service for down there, to get all the electric done down there, it's probably a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred fifty thousand dollar job. So that's going to go out to bid, that's going to be on the agenda tonight. Motion to authorize the annual donation to the Bristol Riverside Theater in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Motion to accept a law group proposal to perform the wireless feasible management service in the amount of forty-nine hundred. Hire two additional part-time, hire additional part-time code enforcer. Hire somebody to oversee the docks.
You're going through what's going to be on this?
I'm going through what's going to be on this.
I actually, I just got a text from my father reminding me, and I forgot if I might just bring one other thing up. At the ceremony for the docks, raising the bar, I think appropriately and kindly, designated a brick for Ralph's efforts, and, you know, just commemorates the efforts that Ralph put forth in getting this project done. My father, being a former council president, I guess, knows how some of these things work every once in a while, and just wanted to make sure we were doing it the right way, so asked that we put on the agenda that we be allowed to install that brick. So I would like to put that on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I have my little notes on this. Go ahead, Dave.
How's the money looking there, Mr. Dillon? Were you, budget's okay? I know we had an influx of money coming in. Sounds like we're going to be hiring a lot of part-timers. Now, these part-timers that we're hiring are just summer, just summer help?
Well, I mean, Mr. Dillon thought it'd be a good idea to hire somebody for the docks that you're probably going to get into about a fourteen...
I'd like to hire everybody, but if we don't have the money to do it, that's all I'm asking.
We'll figure it out.
How are we looking there, Mr. Dillon? Is this going to progress, or are we okay?
Speak on the budget tonight.
I think the council should do what they think is best, and we'll go from there.
All right, and I'm sorry, I wanted to let everyone know, today I had the pleasure of representing Borough Council at the Lenape Valley Foundation, the lodge, the groundbreaking ceremony, and they were very happy to tell everyone there that we were more than forthcoming with everything they wanted, we were, you know, very easy to work with, and I just thought it was, you know, nice for me to represent all of us. And the chief was there with me, and it was a really nice groundbreaking ceremony.
Guys, Jim, what do you have?
Nothing.
So what are we going from here?
Going to the actual public meeting?
I'm going to go into a voting meeting, but I'm going to go to the public first, so anybody that has public comment on the first meeting or the second meeting, that we're ready to start, please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Nobody?
No.
So we're going here, but we're going to add...
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Adams, and I am here representing TPA Enterprises and Train Pop Sattic. I just have some issues of concern that I would like to discuss with the council, and I'm not here in any way to intend to be confrontational or argumentative, I just, I'm concerned. First of all, I would like to, again, congratulate those of you that won to keep this wonderful council together, because you have done wonders. Since we've been here in three years, there have been a lot of very good things, and we're very happy with that. We have been able to operate our building without the official UNO certificate, and for that, we are very, very grateful. The council has helped us as far as generating more people here. The small business revolution also made a big impact on the crowds that are now coming into town. And I don't know whether everyone, or maybe I'm, maybe speaking for other business owners also, but on the day-to-day issues that we have, that we need help with, sometimes we just don't, can't quite get there when we're trying to accomplish things. We knew we needed electric service in our building, and we had intended to do it. We applied at redevelopment authority last year for funding for that, to get working capital for that, and with every, and then any other issues that was outstanding that the borough wanted us to address with the building. Redevelopment denied our request, and that kind of set us back quite a bit, because it was an expensive venture. We had asked them for thirty thousand dollars, and they told us it was way too much. Well, the electric has just been finished, and it came in at twenty-eight thousand dollars. So we had to scramble around and try to figure out how we were going to do that. We've taken care of that, and we're hoping as we move forward that we will be able to do things. When that happened with the electric, we didn't know that when an apartment person moved out, we would not be allowed to re-rent that apartment until the electric was done. Again, we spent considerable amount of money refurbishing the one apartment, the biggest apartment that we have on the one end. And we did carpeting, we did new flooring in the kitchens and the bathroom, we redid new LED lighting in the ceiling fixtures, so that it would help for people with their costs. And we also put carpet throughout the common areas and up and down the stairways, which had not been changed in, I don't know how long, but anyway, we took care of that. The problem was that we could not re-rent it. It was ready, it's been ready since December, and we were not allowed to put it up for rent with a UNO because of that electric issue, which has now been resolved. We did get stickers on it from the underwriter. We've requested at different times to, different issues that we have, small, they may seem small and insignificant to you, but to us, it's not, it's a day-to-day issue. We asked if we would be able to hang banners, you know, the little flag banners, to let people know that we were now carrying bait and tackle, because we sort of picked that up by default, because nobody else on the street wanted it. And Mr. Schweitzer thought for sure we should have a bait and tackle shop somewhere on Mill Street because of the docks, and we agreed. So he went up and down the street, and he came back, and he said, "You're the only ones that have space, and you're the only ones that I can, I think should be doing it." So we said, "All right, we'll give it a try." So we wanted to try to advertise it. Well, when I asked that question, I was told, "No, try advertising." Well, my advertising budget has been out of the, just out of this world, with, and I've been cutting it back, but we asked, with the docks coming, we asked to be able to vend the worms and the tackle, our bait and tackle things down there. We even tried to sweeten the pot by having, stating that we would have, whoever we hired, one of the teenagers that we were going to hire to do that, have him pick up. They can't just stand around there all day, so we wanted them to be busy earning their money and to kind of pick up around the docks. So, you know, that would be the things that we're selling if people left it, and just general trash that would be around, that would get in, at least get in the receptacles. That was the other thing. But the most recent issue that really has me concerned is the fact that we have a tenant that was willing to rent Five Pond Street, and went through the proper channels to have, be approved for their business at that location. Zoning was denied for a dog training facility. Then we had to go through the appeal variance process, which we did, and again, that was denied. I'm not quite sure why it was denied, because we really weren't given a reason. We were told we'd get a letter within forty-five days. The organization that we were working with to have this tenant in was Lead the Way, I don't know if anybody is familiar with that organization or not, but Amy trains the dogs as well as their owners. She doesn't just train dogs, she trains the owners to train the dogs, and that's necessary. She also does service dogs, that she has a program that she works out for service dogs that allows people that can't really afford thirty thousand dollars at a pop to be able to get a service dog, and she works with them throughout a couple-year period of time to make sure that everybody's okay with things. to make sure that everybody's okay with things and that everything works out. And these are for people that are blind, PTSD, epilepsy, and certainly anxiety disorders, which I feel like I need right now. But the intent of the group is not to kennel dogs. She does not want to kennel, there is no space for kennelling, and I believe that that was what was behind the reason for the denial, but it's not in the ordinance, I don't think, for trainers. She's not kenneling. This was made perfectly clear at the zoning meeting, and there does appear to be a precedence with another dog service facility in town, in the same city, town central area, I think it's called. As a matter of fact, Donna from Digger Dogs came up to us the next day after the hearing, the zoning board hearing, and said, "Oh, congratulations, Brian." She said, "I hear you're gonna get the, you're gonna get the training facility downstairs, you're gonna get your, your bottom building done." And he said, "No," he said, "we're not, they denied it." And she was quite surprised, she'd have been here tonight except she's in the mountains with her family. At this point, we're just very uncomfortable with all of the denials that we've received. I don't know, Ralph, we're just uncomfortable with the situation, and it's, at this point, it's starting to cause hardship. I mean, we just put out the twenty-eight thousand, and I don't know how much more I can keep putting out and keep being told no.
Here's the problem we have, that zoning basically works as an independent organization that's under a court stenographer, I mean, we have no jurisdiction over their decisions, so anytime they approve something or disapprove something, it's not a council issue. There's a process where, like they said, they write an opinion letter, and then you have so many days to appeal that to Common Pleas Court.
No, I know.
We never had, I mean, Louis served on the zoning board many years ago, Bill was the solicitor for his own board for twenty-some years. It's like hard, and they make a decision.
I was on the zoning board.
So, although I understand what you're saying, and I, and we're really not allowed to comment on that basically because, you know, this is a court matter.
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna just, I don't wanna say the wrong thing.
First of all, in, within forty-four, forty-five days, you will get a written decision that will be very detailed, and at that point, you will know the basis of their decision. You may not agree with it, but you'll, you'll get the basis. You wouldn't have received it that night. All they tell you that night is they voted to deny or approve the application. So, you will get a decision within forty-five days. They are, they're a quasi-judicial body, okay? They, they hear testimony under oath, they deliberate in, in, you know, like an executive session, and they render a decision. Once they render a decision, your recourse is to appeal it to the Court of Common Pleas. This council has no jurisdiction to question them, has no jurisdiction to ask them to change, we just have no jurisdiction, okay? So, despite your disappointment, you have to wait for that decision and decide if you're gonna appeal it or not.
Mm-hmm.
Let me just comment on something else because I think you started off by saying that the inspector lets you continue your business without a UNO. I'm sure what you meant is you got a temporary UNO. Okay, that's important.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, we, we are permitted to issue temporary UNOs and allow people to continue certain types of improvements, as long as they're not serious or are not gonna be harmful. So, obviously, the inspector is working with you. Unfortunately, when it comes to rentals, our ordinance does provide that every time you change tenant, we have to be able to get in there and make sure that it's, it's up to par. And even there, the inspector usually will work with people. And again, that is, that is something that the inspector does. Council has no control to tell that inspector what to do or not to do, and that's the way it should be. The borough hires these people to do a job. But as far as the zoning, I would just ask you to, to be patient and wait for that forty-five days, and when you get the decision, you may have a better understanding of their rationale, and if you still disagree, you're entitled to appeal it. Appeal period, it doesn't, it's, it's not a cumbersome process. In fact, you'll usually, within a month, you'll be in front of a judge at a conference and try to work it out. So, but unfortunately, this council really has nothing, no jurisdiction to help you with that, and it's, it's, it's set up that way intentionally.
No, I understood that.
It's a separate, it's a separate body.
I understood that, but I, I wanted you to know, all the frustrations that we've had as a small business trying to do well for the community and trying to help, we participate in as much as we can, some things are beyond us, but, you know, we do what we can to participate with the borough, raising the bar, Mike and Ron with every, whatever they're doing, Bill Pezza, and we, we really wanted to ask guidance from you, is what, what are we doing wrong? Are we doing something wrong that?
I think we're very happy to have you here.
Thank you. We're happy to be here.
You made a major investment, you own multiple stores, you, you know, I mean, everything you're doing is great for, for Mill Street. And, you know, I, I don't wanna waste my opinion on what happened, but I think you gotta wait for a decision and, and see what, see where you go from there.
Does that, Mr. Slender, that, that appeal can't start until the decision itself is actually delivered?
Yes.
So, we have to wait until whenever I get the letter?
She says forty-five days, you may get it next week.
Yeah, okay.
And she has up to, right?
They have up to forty-five days, I don't know if you asked for next.
That's what they said, no, they said up to forty-five days.
Yeah, I don't know if you asked for an expedited decision, sometimes if you ask them to expedite it, they will. But your thirty-day appeal period doesn't begin to run until you receive that written decision.
Okay.
So, you know you're gonna have time to, to review and respond.
Okay.
But they do have up to forty-five days. I don't think they've been taking that long, but you may wanna contact the zoning officer and see if they could push that up, just to, to speed up the process.
Okay. Does that impact the borough? If we go, if we go to the Court of Common Pleas, do you have to go there?
Our solicitor.
Or the zoning board or somebody?
Zoning board will go there.
The zoning board would go, and you pay for it?
Yes.
That's the way it works, okay.
Really, it's all part of the process.
Okay.
I mean, it's no, I know there's a motion, Amy's gonna get into this, it'll be on it, but.
Okay.
I can't do anything for you with the zoning board. And the issue with the electrical inspection, that's not only for our protection, that's for your protection.
Oh, I understand.
Because if the tenant was allowed to move in there, and something happened, and they didn't have an underwriter's label on that electric panel, we, we'd both be in trouble. But the issue with the signs or temporary signage, you know, I think there should be something that we can do to help, help retailers, because the sign, I, I, the sign ordinance is, you know, probably thirty or forty years old, it's very restrictive, and it was because not everybody always does something the right way.
Yeah, you don't want it to look like a carnival going down the street, that you need to have things untasteful.
Sometimes if you let somebody put a big sign up and it's an ugly sign.
Right.
But I think we should revisit your issue on, on what you can do, what you're allowed to do for temporary signage, and I don't know whether that would be Sally could help us out on that, Jim?
I've seen sandwich, you know, the sandwich board signs on Mill Street, are they?
But just because we see it, doesn't make it legal. Let's try to do it the right way, so we, we're gonna, no, no, but if we're gonna be involved.
Is that what you're talking about, putting up?
No, no.
What were you talking about?
The little half-flag thing.
Oh, the ones that they're, okay, I know.
Would that be something you take in and out every day?
Right, we would, I don't know.
Yes, I mean, that would make sense.
Yeah, I mean, we take our flags in and out every day.
They'll be with our No Ways to sign.
You know, I, I just, the borough and this council has done so much to move Bristol Borough forward, because it took Brian a long time to convince me to come here, because I was associating Bristol Township, I didn't associate Bristol Borough. So, I hate to see other businesses, maybe they've run into a no here and there, and they just don't, they don't say anything, but I've gotten several no's since last December, November, I think, for the redevelopment authority.
What does she do?
So, it's just.
About signs, what does she do? She have to request?
Well, I would, I would try to talk to Sally to see what's available in our ordinance is, if those temporary kind of things.
She told me no.
Oh, she did?
I did, I talked to her, that's who told me no, yeah. Now, I, we try to go by the, you know, sometimes I think maybe we should just do and ask for forgiveness, I don't know, maybe it would be easier, I'm not sure. But I appreciate your, your time and your listening to me, and I just, I hate to see all this wonderful work not pay off because you're not gonna have businesses. The businesses are what's gonna drive those people in and out of here, First Fridays is wonderful, it really is, and the docks, man, what about those docks? Brian and I are gonna take a walk down there tonight because we haven't been out yet.
Well, just to let you know that we do appreciate you being here.
Okay, thank you.
I want you to know that.
Thank you. All right, we'll see what we can.
Good luck.
Work out, thanks very much.
Anybody else on this side of room wanna speak on anything? Anybody on this side of room wanna speak on anything? Norman, go to the podium, please.
I thought you were gonna call me on this, I was sitting back here. I kinda forgot what I'm using for. I lost my words.
You're never lost a word. I can tell you that.
Thanks, Ralph. Well, first of all, I wanna thank you for asking me to come back again to speak. I'm actually here to speak about two things. One is Hebuto Night that we're gonna have, and the other one is our festival. Our Hebuto Night will be this coming Saturday, beginning at five, flag raising first, hopefully Chief Henry or any of the officers that wanna come are welcome, Mayor Saxon, anyone who wants to come is welcomed. And it's actually a pre-festivity to the Puerto Rican Day. Then after the flag raising, we go down to our monument, and we have music and light refreshments and some snacks, and that'll be from six to nine. Then our festival is actually the twenty-second, from one to eight. We're gonna have different groups there, we're gonna have Basafina horses again, we weren't gonna have them, but they told us that they are gonna come. We have three different groups coming, the Triura Nacelle, Son Siete, and Swing Conseis. We have fillers, some young people that are gonna be singing there, Jenny Colon who sang with us before, we have a gentleman who's a master artist in Candido Diaz, who's gonna tell us the history of the art of the Vegante mask that we wear at different carnivals, that it's, it's a colorful mask with horns, and it's kinda scary looking, with clown outfits with the different colors in it, but he's gonna be explaining that to us, which is very nice. And we're gonna have kids, again, we're gonna have the children's workshop with some amusements also, we're gonna teach kids different crafts and of our, about Puerto Rico, and that's basically why we're there, is to continue our, this is our forty-sixth, to continue our traditions, our cultures, our artisans, so that this way it can continue from the years, 'cause a lot of that gets put in the wayside. If you don't teach the young ones, especially, hopefully, the young ones are the ones who are gonna take over after us, I mean, my, my parents did it for many years back, and I hope we can continue this festival. We welcome everyone to come, anyone willing to volunteer with us, you know, we would love to have you, anyone who would like to join our group, again, we'd love to have you also. And I wanna thank you, and everybody said everything about the docks, it's wonderful, now we can have them come in in their boats. So, again, I hope to see everyone there, and I thank you again for inviting me to speak on behalf of the Puerto Rican culture.
Norman, what's day of the flag raising?
The flag raising is this Saturday.
This Saturday.
This Saturday at five o'clock, right here at the Borough Hall, and the festival is the twenty-second, from one to eight. And I didn't introduce myself, I'm Norma Gonzalez Sullivan, yeah, president, I thought you all knew me.
We do. And if you don't know her, this past weekend, she was actually at the monument planting flowers and getting the monument ready for Puerto Rican Day.
Yeah, 'cause my husband and I, he's very dedicated in that, but you don't, you don't wanna hear what he has to say, God knows where he's at. But he, yeah, we, we do that all the time, and the only bad thing is, it's like anything, you can't track everyone there, you have to watch, like, when you plant things, people come in and destroying it, so hopefully, people will be a little kind and look out for our, our monument and keep everything nice and clean, and keep their little doggies off of the mulch and stuff. But yeah, we did, and thank you very much for posting those pictures on Facebook, I, it looks lovely.
Awesome.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
Anybody else on this side of room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of room wanna speak on anything? Public participation. So, Joe, do you have anything?
Just a little bit, real quick. I wanna thank the council for allowing us to honor Sergeant Moore's night for his twenty-five years of service. As part of that, as a continuation of that thought, I know a lot of times we're concerned about, you know, our police officers are just out there driving around in a car and they're not doing anything. Well, sometime think about what that job is that they're doing. You know, just in the newspaper the last couple days, you know, we've seen four young people disappear, you know? We live in a small town, 1.5 square miles, a lot of thing goes on, a lot of things go on in this town that we are not all aware of, but our police department is. And they're out there, and I just wanna tell you that they're working very hard in keeping our town safe twenty-four seven. We have a lot of our special patrols out there that we've had previously, thanks to Chief Henry and some of his connections. We have some other patrols out there that we're coordinating with other departments and the state police. Citations are up, arrests are up, and I just want everybody to know that our police department's out there is doing a great job. Ending with that, too, I share Betty's concern about the traffic survey that I think we need to have done relative to Mill Street, the end of Mill Street by the King George and by the theater. Especially when you come down on First Fridays, you see the amount of people, fortunately the streets are closed, the amount of people just trying to get across the streets, and when the streets open and there's half those people, you can't get across, somebody's gonna get killed on that corner, I firmly believe that. Now, we all know that because it's a state road, we have to deal with certain requirements that the state puts out there, but hopefully, we'll be able to do something, council will be able to do something, or convince the state that we need to put some type of mechanized or soft cushion, whatever that we can get to slow down the traffic coming around that corner, and then allowing people to get across at the theater. And I think that's it. Have a great summer, enjoy Puerto Rican Day.
I forgot to say one thing, can I say? Gotta go back up there, we can't hear you. Sorry. Sorry. I'm sorry, I forgot to actually say that we have a group called TKA, that they're the freestyle group that's coming, that they're gonna be the headliner, so I always forgot to say that they were gonna be there, I'm their headliners. So, we would have to talk to you about that also.
She answer?
Yeah, no, and then, you know, have your dancing shoes ready, have empty bellies, and come eat, drink, and enjoy the day, 'cause it's gonna be a, like a tropical day, just a day to relax for everyone, we do all the hard work. Thank you.
And isn't there something you wanted with the trash boxes or something, you made a request?
Oh, yes, Mascaro, they actually were giving us boxes, and I haven't had anyone get back to me about that, but if they could, actually, they usually drop them off downstairs, and I pick them up, and we need volunteers for like, 'cause we lost our volunteer, no, our gentleman that we used to collect trash for us, we need someone to help us, you know, for that, that, from one to eight, to collect trash, if anyone's willing to volunteer, I mean, we're willing to pay them also, but if we can get someone from there, if anyone who's out there listening, or anybody who's... who's out there listening or anybody here has a child, a son, we'd appreciate it. Thanks for coming back again.
All right, Norma. Thank you.
One other thing, Ralph, too, also under police. We're still working at this point, six months in a year, under budget. I just want to let council know that.
Under budget. I knew you had it in you.
It's not an easy task, believe me.
All right. Before we get, so we're going to go, we have an agenda here, starting with, you know, this date of July 10. And then Betty has a sheet that the manager was jotting down, things that have to be added to the agenda. If some of yous forgot what's there, she'll either check them off or whatever. But before we get into this, I just want to say that I think that the dock project in my 16 years has to be by far one of the most exciting days that this town has ever seen. I mean, we did a lot. We started, and I said this in our, when I spoke at the ceremony, you know, Sixers are saying, trust the process. Well, we've been saying that for 16 years. You got to trust the process. And we knew what we had to do. We had a game plan. We, you know, kept going straight down the road, you know, infrastructure, borough buildings, everything that had to be done. Because once you fix your own home and you get everything in line and now you bring people in, you have something to show them. So I think our plan has come to fruition. And I, it couldn't have been more of an exciting day, I think, for everybody, the town and all the people that were down there just to enjoy it. And I'm getting pictures and I'm getting drone shots and people sending me stuff every day saying how great it is down at these docks. So, I mean, I'm sure there's risk with everything you do, but this is something that we all should be proud of, including all the people that live in this town. It's a massive structure. When people were saying, oh, you got to take the docks in, oh, everybody's coming down, nobody could comprehend what we designed out there. Am I right, Kirk? I mean, that is one structure that is going nowhere. So I'm proud to say I was part of it. I want to thank the council that supported it. And I think it's going to be here for many, many generations to come. It just opens up a new artery to bring people into town. So hopefully this is something that's really going to impact this borough. And it starts with the Gazella. So we'll start with item three with our motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the council minutes for 61217, accept the treasurer's report for May 2017, accept the police and DJ's report for June 2017, accept fire chief's report for the June 2017, accept inspection department report for June 2017, accept the public works department report for June of 2017, accept the HAB report and decision for June 26 of 2017.
Second by Ms. Collin. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize agreement between Borough, the Bristol Culture and Historical Foundation, and the Gazella's Primario, Primo, to permit toll shift dock at the Bristol Waterfront on October 20th and October 21st, 2017.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, number five.
President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1317, amending the code of the ordinances, Chapter 16, Parks and Recreation, to add Section 16-103, Rules and Regulations for the access pier and docks, and Section 16-104, Penalties for Violations of Section 16-103.
By Ms. Collin. Questions or comments? Mr. Catroci?
I have a question. I have a couple of questions. What happens between November and April? We're saying that the docks are going to be used from May to October.
Pardon me, Louis?
What are we doing from November to April?
I don't know why it's saying they're closed.
Our instructions say May to October.
This is the docks, the docks, our pier.
I know.
Gives us the option of closing them. Obviously, if you want to leave them open, you can. But I think the idea was there wasn't certainty as to whether we wanted an open door in winter months. And of course, we'll see from the use. They may not get used. But under this ordinance, it gives you the right to close them. If council says, let's leave them open until November or open them up in March, you certainly can.
Okay.
It just gives that option.
So it's not a violation, if we have good weather?
Well, you're going to control.
We can control that.
And obviously, somebody's not violating.
We're not limiting.
But I think, I think I agree with Louis. I think if we're advertising that they're going to be closed, then people are not going to use them if November's nice or December's nice.
Well, you don't have to advertise that they're closed. It just gives you that option unless you want to change it.
All right. But there was a question and answer letter. It went out. And one of the questions was, it's going to be closed. So I think we need to maybe, we'll have another dock meeting.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I understand. If it's icy or something like that, you don't want people walking down there, even if they do bring their boats.
I think the way I left it was, let's give it 30 days. Let's all come back to the drawing board. Merle's looking into, he's down there a lot, the fire chief's down there, the chief of police is down there. Let's get reports back to this committee and then let's readjust. And we said that from the beginning. We can't write the book the first 30 days or 60 days. So...
Another issue I, I think it may be an issue, personal watercraft, jet skis. I mean, I understand why we're not letting kayaks or canoes there. But some of these jet skis today are, you know, some of them are three-man units. And I think there's a lot of people that travel on jet skis. I think we're eliminating...
Let me just...
Is there a legal reason why?
The reason I think we discussed this at this meeting was you're backing in a massive boat where you're, you may not see that jet ski at this point. So again, we're not banning them. We're just saying right now, let's give it, you know, some time and see how it works out. And these are all the things we don't know. It's the unknown. So we caution on the side of safety versus, you know, just let everybody start pulling it. I mean, Kirk, I don't know if you want to add to that or...
The personal watercraft is a little bit of a touchy subject because, you know, we're bound by the grant funding that we got as well. And the nature and spirit of the grant and really the funding source of the grant is around non-travelable transient boats. And personal watercraft is not that. You know, some of the funding came through the purchase of fishing equipment, taxes associated with that, the purchase of gasoline on the water. There's a tax associated with that. That's why you pay a premium on the water. Well, you know, wave runners aren't necessarily fueling up on the water. They're being fueled up on, on land. So there's that sensitivity issue. There's other issues that, you know, Ralph just described. So it's, it's sensitive.
I think there's a fine line, too, in the sense of, it'd be great if someone who's on the river for the day decides they're going to pull their jet ski up and go have lunch. But at the same time, they might say, meet 10 of their buddies on the boat docks so that they can, you know what I mean? Where they're pulling up and they're using the boat docks, more or less is just a place to jump on a jet ski as opposed for that, for that transient idea of the boat docks. So like, I, it's, it's a dilemma. I mean, it's...
Yeah. And it's, sorry, just another point I wanted. We, we can't tie up the docks with wave runners and jet skis. We have to make sure that, again, the nature of this is to bring people to town, get off their boats and spend money. And we really, in speaking with the grant administrators, the people that are going to be checking up on us, we have to make sure that that larger boat, when it comes to show up in town, there's a spot it can tie up. If somebody's coming from the Chesapeake Bay, wants to tie up and there's nowhere to tie up because occupied with 25, you know, wave runners, then we're really in violation of that grant fund.
But we have designated spaces, a limited amount of spaces?
Well, really, I mean, the only available spacing might be out on the outer dock, but we're seeing a lot of boats tying up to it. But that really serves as like a breakwater. And we're recommending smaller vessels tie up on the inside because they're getting rocked on the outside when the wakes come in. And the reason why that outer dock's so much wider is it's just, it crushes the wake. And so, you know, to tie up wave runners on the outside, it wouldn't be safe for the people getting on and off their wave runner or for the vessel to be tied there.
That was one of the things when I know in the one meeting we had, talked about the difference in height between a wave runner and boat. You'd have more of an opportunity to fall off and fall onto the dock or fall into the water. Also, too, I think the general consensus is that most of the wave runners are local people.
Right.
Who could, you know, easily walk to, what's your, even though they're out on the river and enjoying themselves. I mean, the intent is to try and bring in people from across the river, from Maryland.
Development, I mean, it's a little short. It's...
To have the wave runners coming in and out of there, like, I think it's dangerous with the, with boats. I really do.
I say we just take one day at a time and let's see how things go. And we, you're going to have multiple things that we should have did and we're going to have multiple things we shouldn't have, we should have not done. So let's just play it by ear and stay on top of it. And we'll meet, like, look, we figured everything else out in town. I think everything's running good. This is going to run good, too. We just need to get through that, you know, the learning curve.
One other thing, Kirk, while you're up, I mean, this isn't on the motion per se, but the beach area where, we have that beach area south of the pier. Is there a slim way we could put a provision there that people could just hitch up their kayak or canoe? I mean, I know guys beach their canoes there now.
Sure.
But if we just had some kind of post there where they can tie it so it doesn't drift out if the tide comes in or changes?
It's definitely, you know, we're already looking into this waterfront redevelopment, the entire parking lot and trying to, you know, increase the efficiency of parking down there and make it more, you know, suitable for the events and, and all things alike. But definitely that small boat launch area, we, that's, we need to create that space and really make it even more of a location where those kayakers, canoeers, and paddled waters, and even maybe the wave runners, like, maybe we can formalize that more. That's definitely something that we're talking about and looking and planning for the waterfront redevelopment. And now keep the vessels separate so you don't have somebody trying to tie up a 32-foot boat that's 15 feet in the air worried about whether or not there's a wave runner.
Yeah. That would be a nice area.
That's right.
Yeah, I think at one time they even talked about that when, years ago, when we met over at the Redevelopment Authority, I think it was Hudson that suggested that kind of area be kept. That was like an ideal natural spot.
Yeah. I know Council, any environmental council is, has this on their radar and they're promoting that. Like, you know, such people taking trips there to Burlington Island.
And there's a lot more kayak activity on the river right now.
More and more. All right. Any other questions or, Mr. Devine?
Yeah, I have a question. Part of this, the second part of this motion is that the penalties for the violations. So who's going to be in charge of the violations? Is that going to be something that we hire a part-time person? Are they going to have the ability?
I'd say only the police could issue a...
Oh, only the police? Okay.
Which they have already.
I mean, we, there's a new law that I'm unaware of.
No, I don't know. More like a, like a ticket writer, you know, that does the parking, something like, along those lines.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, number six. I think we're at, right?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the filing of the 2017 ARLE grant application for the Green Lane Flooded Roadway Detection System.
Second. Second by Ms. Collin. Questions or comments? What we're trying to do, so everybody understands, is get money for the flooding under the bridge, correct, to notify the...
To notify the driver.
The driver, which, how deep the water is and all when you're coming. Nobody's really interested. All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for the purchase of the 10, of 1028 Chestnut Street, TMP number 04-023-375 for $55,000.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All the, Mr. Devine?
I have a comment. Although, I mean, for me, Chestnut Street, I was kind of, you know, I was always against, you know, kind of selling them off and not letting them. But, I mean, after the election and seeing what happened in the South Ward, the way they looked at, to me, the people, that's part of the program, I guess, that they, you know, they're voting for. So, I mean, I, I think I'm able to, you know, change my view when it comes to the people, the way they, you know, that live in that area and that's what they want. I got no problem with it.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to allow the public works to install a commemorative brick, remembering Di Giuseppe's role in the building of the boat docks, presented by Raising the Bar.
Second by us, three hands up.
That's okay.
Second by Mr. Catroci. How's that?
That's good.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, the only comment I have is, I mean, I will not be voting yes for this because to me, as a, as a public servant, it's our job to do these things for the public and the people of the town that you represent. Not that I have anything against a brick going in, but listen, it's as a whole, this is not anything that one person was able to do. It, you're voted on as a council. And to me, I mean, I just don't see the idea of, you know, if it's one person, if it's a dictatorship, let me know. And then we could put, you know, put a statue of him up there next to Christopher Columbus.
I would like to see that statue.
I know you would.
Ralph, can I just say something?
I don't think it's worth it.
Well, it isn't, but I would like to say something. For 16 years, you've, or even longer, you have, you, you actually brought it up. You're the person that had the concept. And I think most of us here realize that. And let's just take a vote.
Thank you, Ms. Collin.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Yes?
Mr. Ricchio?
What are we voting on? I'm sorry.
The brick.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Mr. Devine?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Collin?
Yes.
Mr. Gerardius?
Yes.
Mr. Devine? All abstentions. And I didn't ask for this.
I know you didn't.
I was totally shocked by the, you know, the gesture.
Yeah, but you deserve it.
You want to say something?
Sure.
Michael Norman, where do I live now? Radcliffe Street. I just wanted to mention that this is something that, as a representative of the board of Raising the Bar, this is just something that we chose to do, to recognize. It's, it's our choice. It's our decision. If you were to take time to come to Mill Street, you'll see that there are various bricks that have been designed to acknowledge artists, whether they're living or deceased or other people that have done services. So again, this is something, and I'm sure on behalf of Raising the Bar and Mr. Pezza, that this is our choice. This is the least that we can do. And we wanted to honor Ralph for this and all the things that he does along with council. Thank you.
Motion carries at six, one, and one abstention.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Borough Manager to purchase material and contracts for labor for maintenance over the wharf.
Second by Mrs. Collin. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, all abstentions.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertisement for electrical bids for the Wharf area.
Second. Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? Mr. Ricchio?
Question. So we're going to take that junction box that's on the left-hand side of the building and we're going to do something with that? That's what we're doing?
They're going to redo all electric under the Wharf. All new lighting, all the splices are going to be waterproof. How are things going to get done the right way?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Devine?
Yes, I have a comment. I don't know, Mr. Saunders, maybe you could help me. I don't know if it was a great idea for council president to comment that it's going to cost 100 or 150,000 to do this. I don't know if that's something that was...
Well, it's a public bid. You know what's going to happen.
Right. But I'm just saying, I'm just throwing a number out there. Somebody...
The reason for that, so you know, is we have a responsible contract ordinance. This will come under that. And if we anticipate that the contract's going to be over 75,000, then it comes under that ordinance. So it's important that we got some sense from the engineers and all whether it'd be over or under 75,000. So on a council, I know what they were voting on, but...
We'll put a price range budget in a public bid, too, because that also attracts contractors. You know, if it's 5,000 dollar job, the big companies don't want it. If it's a million-dollar job, the medium-sized, you know, so we give a budget on the public bid numbers for that.
Okay. I was just asking a question. That's all. I just didn't know. Okay, I was just asking a question, that's all, I just didn't know if it was something that was why you could do, that's one.
Great, great money left.
We intend to pay for this without using taxpayer money.
I'm all in.
I know, I know when the docs will.
All right, wait, is there a motion? Yes, a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the annual donations to the Bristol Riverside Theater in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second by Mrs. Collins.
You all wanna do it, yeah.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Cohen Law Group proposal to perform wireless facility management services in the amount of forty-nine hundred dollars.
Second, second by Mr. Ricchio. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'd like to make a motion to hire an additional part-time code enforcement officer.
Second by Mr. Ricchio. Questions or comments?
I have a question. How, how quickly will we execute this and how, how will that process work?
Well, I, you know, I know it's personnel, it shouldn't be discussed in a public meeting, but I think we have somebody that maybe we could bring in and talk to and see if we can.
Agree?
Agree on bringing him back.
Okay.
I think, you know, we're leaving it up to the manager or is this, is council wants a vote on this?
My, my, my only question was, I, I wasn't really happy with Mr. Dillon's response to the budget, you know, council does what it does and then we'll work the details out later. I, I would rather get some assurance that, because what would happen later in November? Oh, we hired this guy, we hired this guy, oh, guess what? You hired people, now there's a local service tax coming, there's an earned income tax coming, 'cause you, you didn't do your diligence in July, and you hired people, and you hired them, Dave, now you got, now you gotta pay for it. So, before we hire anybody, I, I would just like to make sure that we got the money and after, if Mr. Dillon says, yeah, it's not.
It's like anything else, Dave, if you got the money, it's easy for council to vote yes, just like the, the docs, I mean, not to get into it, you know, originally.
Well, I, I'm not gonna raise taxes in November, so.
There were people against the docs if it was gonna cost taxpayers when we were on that half a million. Then, when I went out and raised the rest of the money, everybody jumps on the bandwagon, and that's fine.
It wasn't, it wasn't jumping on the bandwagon.
I'm not criticizing anybody, but we have to make decisions what's right for this town, and right now.
Half a million dollars short, I didn't want the taxpayers footing that bill.
Okay, so you would've given up.
Once you got the money, everything was great.
But you would've given up a three million dollar facility that's out there now for somebody paying an additional twenty dollars a year.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah.
That's, that's where we differ, you know, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Because you weren't saying that, you were saying half a million dollars, oh, and then, then you got contingencies, and then you got this, and you got that, that, that half a million was gonna be grown. We weren't getting firm numbers. So, when you gave me a firm number and we got it all covered, everything was good. And that's all I'm asking now. I don't want, I, I don't, I don't wanna be put in the corner saying, hey, you voted for some workers, Dave, and guess what? Now, now, the money's not there, and we have to raise taxes through that local service, 'cause every year, that comes up, the earned income tax.
They always put it on the table, no matter what, because you have to by a certain date.
Well.
And that's why it comes up.
And, and no one's saying, hey, it's just for summer, it's, it's for three months.
Well, it's for a time, I mean, we're talking about hiring an additional part-timer because Tony did write, he did go out with Joe Carroll, and I spoke to Joe Carroll, and it's just getting bad, I mean, is it, it is now July.
I agree, I agree. If, if the money's there, Betty, I'm all in.
But here's the thing, you have to run a borough efficiently, right? We're working, Mr. Devine's been asking Mr. Dillon, I hear, tonight for something. He can't even produce it because we don't have the staff that we used to have. Mr. Ricchio drove with Mr. Carroll in a car and firsthand seen we need more help with the inspection department. So, it isn't about, you know, I don't wanna come in November, it's our job to figure out how to do it. And I think we have, for the last sixteen years I'm here, we have figured it out. So, you either gotta have faith in this council or you vote no. I mean, it's, it's a simple, Mr., I didn't bring this up tonight, Mr. Ricchio brought up hire an inspector, Mr. Devine is probably gonna make a motion to hire somebody to work at the docks. So, I mean, these, these aren't Ralph's ideas tonight. So, we have a motion on the floor to hire an inspector, it's been second, part-time inspector.
I think the costs are really the minimums when you look at it, for, you know, if we hired a half a dozen people, at thirty hours a week, that's part-timers.
Right.
It's not gonna break the bank, and hopefully, the inspector will get some revenues in because we have some people that are habitual violators in this town.
Yes, yes.
And their neighbors suffer because of it.
You're absolutely right.
And they get, you know, and we try to work on it, we give them citations, we take them to court, and there are certain people that just choose just to do it their own, their own way.
The budget, Dave, we'll give it to you. We'll let you handle it.
Yeah, that's all. Thanks, Ralph.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Devine?
You have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion. I would like to make a motion to have Council President Ralph Di Giuseppe personally pay back the cost of the frivolous defamation lawsuit against Councilman Devine in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
All right, second.
I'm gonna second that motion, 'cause I think that's something council needs to talk about.
All right, Dave?
I'm gonna second that motion, 'cause I think, I got comments on that, I wanna talk about it.
All right. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. First one's a question, is accountability. Are we going to hold our council president accountable for the frivolous lawsuit against another councilperson? That's number one, accountability. The second thing, before that happens, I wanna know, is Mr. Catrochi going to go into public participation and read another four-page love letter of why Mr. Di Giuseppe is his hero? That's what I wanna know. And I wanna remind everybody, what happened for this lawsuit? And why it was brought about is, alls I did was read something that was directly from the zoning board or whatever, or the planning commission, that Mr. Di Giuseppe bought a property for twenty-five thousand dollars, didn't put a nail in the building, knew it was condemned or in bad shape, a poor guy bought the property for a hundred and thirty, so Mr. Cat, I mean, Mr. Di Giuseppe made a hundred thousand dollars, and this house, as a contractor, knew that it was in bad shape, this poor gentleman falls from doing work, lands on a street, and is now, from what I heard, and he was in a coma forever, he, he, he's paralyzed, partially paralyzed is what I hear. Now, in the meantime, he's able to, I don't even know what he did with the property, now his son listed the property, and, in the meantime, the, the former owners are suing the borough. So, these are the types of things that you need to know and to, to hold everybody accountable, whether you give him a brick for what he did at the docks or for whatever he's done in sixteen years, you still, everybody has to be held accountable. And if this is something, listen, if you're gonna dig in your own pocket and you're gonna spend ten thousand dollars, you're gonna think twice about coming up with a frivolous lawsuit against the next person. So, I just wanna make that very clear to everybody and every councilperson here that's voting, including you, Mr. Petrochi.
Mr. Gerard?
Yeah, my, my comment is, this went, this went way over, way overboard. It should've got settled that night, when Mr. Devine said those comments and, and Mr. Di Giuseppe didn't like them, they should've went in the back room and hashed it out. Okay, if that's not good enough for you, okay, then, you, you stand up, okay, and you state your case, and you bring witnesses in to back up your story, and you prove that Mr. Devine is lying, like I had to do not too long ago. But instead, Ralph chose option number three, I'm gonna sue. And we're talking almost ten thousand dollars, okay? Think about that, if I were to give you ten thousand dollars, now, I know it's insurance money, so it's really not coming out of your pocket, but what happens when you keep using your insurance? Get in a couple of car accidents, see what happens to you, you get dropped or your rates go up. And I think that's a situation that the borough's gonna be coming into, where our rates are gonna go up. So, now, after two years, this ten thousand dollar lawsuit, it got dropped. I don't wanna be involved in this discussion, like I said, I think these two gentlemen should've settled it, or, like I said, Ralph should've stood up, stated his case, and it should've been, went away. There's no reason for a lawsuit that costs the taxpayers ten thousand dollars. Now, I got two options. I could turn around and say, hey, don't do that again, and we'll just let that one slide, or I could fire a shot across Mr. Di Giuseppe's bow with some teeth in it, and I really don't wanna make any decision, but I'm gonna go for option number two. I don't want to see this happen anymore. We're all mature, we should all work it out.
I'm not gonna get into it. Go ahead.
Yeah. You wanna say something?
You go ahead if you want. I'm not gonna get into, you can't debate Mr. Devine intelligently, because all the debates become, become an argument. So, I'm done with all that. I mean, this town is moving in the right direction, everything's been positive, and there's one negative person that sits here, and he's been sitting here for the last five years, I think my picture may be on his dresser, that's how jealous he is, a man, a man of my family, Dave, but, when I filed that, there was a reason, because he's accusing me of somebody getting hurt on a property, which he just did again tonight, so this isn't over now, I could tell you that right now.
Are you gonna sue me again?
Second of all, it's not costing the taxpayers any money, it's part of your policy. So, I said to Mr. Devine a year ago, if you wanna drop this in executive session, we can move forward, he elected not to. I said, well then, why don't, and I said this publicly, why don't you use your own money the way I use my own money to defend, to do this? He elected to use the borough's insurance company. Now, that's fine, but I'm not gonna sit here and dispute this and go over this over and over again. Tony has a problem, he's got a jealousy problem with me and my family, and it's never gonna end, and I'm not gonna take this borough down because of one person on council. You could support him, it doesn't matter to me. I know the direction this town's going in, and that's the direction I wanna move in. Mr. Devine?
Yeah, look, I mean, just to, to comment on your, on your comments is that, number one, it wasn't my decision to use the, the permit or the policy, it's automatic. So, as a councilperson, if another councilperson sues you, you're automatically covered. And they thought it was a, you know, a frivolous lawsuit from the beginning, but that's what, you know, attorneys do, they gotta go through the, the process, and it costs money. So, and I told Mr. Di Giuseppe from that day, what Mr. Di Giuseppe wanted to do was shut me up, intimidate me, and keep everything quiet, is what he wanted to do. So, that way, 'cause if, if it was a lawsuit, he couldn't talk about it, and I couldn't talk about it, he has a way to shut me up. And then, after a while, I knew he was gonna let it go, 'cause it was stupid, it was frivolous, period. And I told him that that day, and I told him when he did, I said, listen, you can do what you want, but I'm telling you right now, I'm not done with it. And that's what happened. Two years later, this is what we have, and it comes back again. It's not, I'm not a person that is jealous. Listen, I grew up on a street in a row home that cost three thousand dollars, and I loved it, it was the best time of my life. I'm not jealous of anything, at all. And I don't have a problem with Ralph Di Giuseppe personally, I have a problem with the way everybody, it turns a blind eye to what he's doing, right? What he's doing, and the idea that he's doing great for the town. Listen, you could do great for the town, right? But you are a public servant, you are not a dictator, you are not a king, you are not a president. You are a council president, just like everyone else here. So, when you put somebody else in that position, understand, you, you gotta take the shots, and if you can't take it, you don't, you don't get upset with somebody and sue them, so you shut them up and intimidate them, right? What do you do, what is it Gerard said? You talk about it, you figure it out. If we talked about it, we're both very similar, I'm sure, and it, it would've been hashed out. But no, he wanted to sue, and this is where we're at.
Tony?
This council, or, this council doesn't have any enforcement powers, we can't force you to pay, right?
I was gonna say, is this binding?
It's not.
Is this like being in court?
That's like me voting tonight to tell you to go home and pay your electric bill. It's the same thing.
Yeah, I don't think this is binding. Is it?
Oh, if it was, you would vote on it?
No, I'm, I'm voting on it anyway.
Right, let it go, let it, he's got a motion on the floor.
I'll just, I'll just make one comment, and that is, this, this has been going on for two years, and I think you've made your point, now, let's, let's vote.
Yeah, let's vote, what I do.
Let's get this over and drop it.
Let's vote. Is he gonna drop it, though, if it doesn't, are you gonna drop it?
This is not gonna.
I never start.
I never start.
I got the floor. Tony, you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, 'cause you were, you were interrupting.
Wrong call, but.
Can I say a couple?
What?
If you don't mind, just for a moment. Somebody made the statement that this is an improper motion, and that's correct. Council cannot have an individual refund any money. Okay, council can vote to refund the money if they want, but they cannot have an individual refund the money. The borough is not out of any money, the insurance company is out of the money, and I spoke to the insurance company, and they are not asking to be reimbursed. Last year, the premiums went down on our liability insurance, and I think we had the president of the insurance company come in here and speak to council in executive session and said, look, grow up, knock it off, and we'll keep the rates down. So, that's my two cents. Roll call, Mr. Gerard.
I'll go with Mr. Dillon, and let's knock it off. I'm, I'm done with it.
Are you voting yes or no?
No.
Yes for me to pay it, no, not to pay it?
I'm, I'm, I'm done with it, no.
Mr. Ricchio?
No.
Mr. Devine?
Yes.
Mr. Pezza?
No.
Ms. Collins?
No.
Mr. Catrochi?
No.
Mr. Di Giuseppe? I abstain from voting. Motion cut, motion defeated. Do we have that motion? Tony, you wanna hire somebody for the work?
Yeah, did somebody write it up?
Talked about, said, make a motion.
All right, make a motion to hire a part-time, I don't even know what we call that, what we call that?
Topmester.
A part-time dockmaster.
Harbor master, whatever. That's.
Don't we have to say how much?
Forty-five.
I would second that.
Dockmaster, what else do I need on it? From.
Let him go, he'll figure it out.
What is it from, what? October, what are we doing it from?
From now till November.
From now.
Go ahead.
July tenth until November first.
Wanna put a salary involved, or you just?
I don't know what the salary, what do we usually give?
Oh, you, you wanna make a motion, so you can't, you gotta figure it out.
Okay. Is it my job to come with a salary?
Yeah, I mean, you want to be...
Individual, is that what it is now, crap, I know you're upset.
Well, no.
Is it an individual thing? So you determine, so you determine what every part-time, maybe listen to me, you determine what each part-time worker makes?
Yeah, we go as a council.
I'm just saying, as a council.
So we're asking you, what do you want it to be?
Okay, as a council, what do we want it to be?
Well, you're making the motion, so do you wanna start with something?
Yeah, let's make it six thousand dollars an hour. Let's, let's do that. Well, I'm saying, you wanna make it ridiculous, I'll make it ridiculous.
We just said...
Not to exceed five thousand dollars.
No, we'll drop it.
No, it's...
Okay, we'll drop it, that's all, we're gonna go to next meeting, and then when something happens, then...
We have a scale, do you wanna use the same scale that we use?
The same one we use, yeah, I mean, honestly, why I gotta reinvent the wheel?
We have to put that...
We got a scale of what we pay part-time workers, isn't it?
It just has to be put on the motion, that's all.
Okay.
So go ahead and say.
No, it's all right, you got it.
You don't want the motion.
No, I don't wanna play games, that's all. You want the motion? Put her up. I'll second it.
I'd like to make a...
It has to be done, it has to be done by somebody that understands...
I'd like to make a motion that we hire a part-time peer, a docmaster, from now until November first, and the salary shall not exceed five thousand dollars.
I will second that.
Any other questions or comments? So basically, we pay twelve dollars an hour to ten to twelve dollars an hour, you wanna see if we can find somebody?
If we can find somebody there, I figured even if we go fifteen dollars for thirty